So it is six thirty three and I'm going to call to order this public hearing. If you would do a roll call for me.
Yes.
Rose.
Right there.
Commissioner Culver.
Here.
Senator Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Urquhart.
Here.
Uh, town members.
Karen.
Karen.
Here.
We are missing one commissioner, but we have a quorum, so we'll proceed. If we can all stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
Right, so we'll move on to the review of the agenda. That's just for this public hearing. We have two charter amendment resolutions that are going to be before us at our regular meeting. Uh, and those are the Town of Upper Maryburg Charter Amendment Resolution one dash twenty twenty five, which is in regard to vacancies and resolution three dash twenty twenty five, which is state changes. Uh, are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. All who consent to the agendas, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Urquhart, do you? Okay. All right, so the agenda. So we will begin the public hearing portion of this. So we're going to start with one, uh, we're going to do these one at a time and you're going to have a chance to speak on each one if you wish. We ask that you try to keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, when you come up to the podium, please state your name and the street you live on. And then you can share your comments with us at this time where we're listening. That's what the public hearing is, we're going to be listening to you. And we will discuss further at the next meeting. So I am going to turn it over, should I turn it over to? What's wrong? Oh. I did my out of point of water?
Well, you said the next meeting, but that's tonight.
Tonight, yes, the next meeting, that is going to happen when this one's done, yes. So I turn it over to attorney, to read it into, someone has to read it into the record. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to attorney rough, I guess, to read into the record and summarize.
Sure, okay. So Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners, the Town of Section eighty two thirty two vacancies of the Charter of the Town. Alter the process for filling vacancies on the Board of Commissioners, providing for the filling vacancies during the first three years of a commissioner's term by special election and filling vacancies during the first ten months of the last of a commission, last years of a commissioner's term by appointment by appointment and providing that a vacancy created within sixty days of a general election will remain vacant until the election. Thank you. And that is really a summary of the changes that are being changed in the Charter.
Oh, well, no, I know you had a question before about the title.
Yes.
And the one year.
Yes.
For the last year, but, oh, I'm sorry.
But it's not the last, yeah, the, the special appointment as we adopted it previously, or the appointment as we adopted it previously would be in one year. Within one year, within one year of the general election, which is stated in the, in the article, in the change, but it's.
Right.
But it has to be.
But it's sixty days.
So you have a four year. Right. So it says that during the first three years of a commissioner's term, it's filled by special election. During the last year of the commission. If there's a vacancy in that first ten months, then it might appoint another commissioners. If it's in the last sixty days, it's still the general election. That's what it said, is that what it's intended.
What was intended, maybe, maybe it's because of how the former council manager form of government hasn't gone into effect. But the modification, the amendment that we made when we reviewed this again, was that there would be in the four year term, since there will be staggered elections, there will still be a general election every two years. There would be an election every two years for staggered terms. So if there's an appointment, or if there is a vacancy in one year, so terms start year one. If there is a vacancy in year one, there would be a special election. If there's a vacancy in year two, which is now less than one year from the next general election, there would be an appointment. And then that seat would be filled at that general election, whether it's actually, whether that term has expired or not. That was the discussion that we had previously.
I think, because when this came, that's what I said, I said, I think this was Commissioner Culver's intention, but I think what, what actually got moved, staff said, what actually, with a motion we actually made and a change we actually presented, was what we have here. The thing the intent was what we said got confused, or I don't know, confused between what we said and how we phrased the motion. Does that sound accurate?
Awesome.
So the way that it's written in the way that it's written in the actual amendment. Uh, section A, in the event of vacancy occurs on the town council less than one year, but more than sixty days prior to the next general election, the remaining council member shall appoint a qualified resident to fill the vacancy. Correct. Uh, section B, special election in the event of vacancy occurs on the town council, the remaining term will be conceded on the town council of more than one year. Prior to the next general election, the Board of Elections Supervisor shall call a special election in the town charter. That language, what I'm saying is once the, and tell me about conflating or, you know, out, out of, out of order on this. Uh, once the Charter Amendment oh two dash two twenty twenty five, which included four year terms and staggered terms, a general election will happen every two years. So it won't be that a special election happens in the first three years of a term.
So it should be during the first year.
First, right, first year.
By special election.
First year.
It's during the second year of the, so of the term, then to an election.
The four year term, years one and years three, because they're right after a general election, would be filled by a special election.
Okay.
Years two and year four, so both of those would be within one year from the next general election, would be filled by an appointment. And that appointment, the seats would be up for during that general election.
Okay, for a two year or a four year term, depending on whether it's a two year or a four year.
Because you would then have the possibility that you're then having in a regular election, the two year thing, do we then need to? The last Charter Amendment that got passed had the discussion of the highest vote counts are getting the four year terms and the lower vote count gets the two year term. But that was set, I think, only for that next election, not vacancies in general. And so would we need to modify that apart again? No, if you're saying that the appointment is then only good until the next election.
So, okay. You know, I thought that's a completely confusingness, I thought, I thought we had discussed it and agreed to it previously. Correct, essentially, the point of it is, so if there's an appointment, if there's a person who has a four year term, that vacancy occurs in year two of that four year term. That seat would be filled by an appointment. But then that seat, even though they're not up for, generally up for election in another three years, there would essentially be a special election during the general election. So the two regular seats that would be up, plus the one seat that was filled by appointment, will all be up for election during the next general.
But they're only filling the remainder of the term of the commissioner that they're replacing.
And that, and that that wasn't my understanding of what we discussed in the July meeting, was that the, the one year was just if there was one year left in their term. And I had thought that in year two of someone's term, there would still be a special election.
So if I can, if I can, just because we're sort of in a public hearing. What I'm hearing, so my understanding was what you're explaining. That was what I understood us voting on. Staff had another understanding of what you're voting on. Commissioner Urquhart has a third understanding of what we're voting on. And with three different understandings of how we're voting on, I think that we need to spend more time on this. Right, like, so especially because we're having a public hearing and what we're talking about is maybe not. I still think there's value in allowing the public to address this about this. But I think unless there's objections that we are going to have to, we'll have to have another public hearing and delay the process, is does this, this doesn't need to be done before the election, does it? Staff, question?
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Okay, so, so just to clarify what my what I'm seeing as inconsistency is that in the, the language and the actual amendment is correct, basically, would be what we discussed. It's the title that specifically calls it out as three years versus how it would be applied in the language.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, sorry, once again, just to, just, I'm, I'm just trying to be super crystal clear. The way that it is written in the title is not assuming or not accounting for the staggering of election. So when we talk about general election, there's still a general election every two years for either three or two seats on the board. So that, that's what I'm just saying is the, is the inconsistency there.
Okay.
So what you're, what I hear the commission say is that the text is correct. That accurately reflects what you're, what you're trying to accomplish. That is, the title alone is the issue. Okay, so you're going to have a public hearing on this because the text is.
Is accurate, okay.
Two ways to address it. One is to leave the title advising everybody what you're doing about providing for the filling of vacancies. Really, that's what the whole thing is about.
Right.
Right? And then leave it out, or while you're doing the public hearing, I will try to rewrite the title and see if it's acceptable to you that way. Those will be my two suggestions.
Okay, I thought there was confusion in the text based on the conversation I had had with staff, but I see that there is not confusion in the text based on what you're saying. And what I'm reading as we're talking, so let's move forward with it and we're, we're going to ask the public to comment on the content of this. You are going to have another opportunity to comment before we go for table or whatever we choose to do at, um, the regular meeting. So if you would please come up to the podium. If you're online, please, is there anyone on? You're, you're going to raise your hand so that our staff can allow you to speak. Just a reminder, in case our online people join us later, you just state your name and the street you live on, and we ask you try to keep your comments to three minutes. So, all right, we are going to turn it over to the public.
Church Street. Since this is coming up and it's not so important to have this done before the election, would you consider putting it towards referendum? Please.
Yeah.
I mean, this is an important piece of big change into our charter. And I would like to, um, I'd like you to put it up on referendum to the, uh, during, during the voting section, meaning that, leaving that, having one as part of the one of it.
I think very.
Oh, can you state your, sorry, can you state your name and street? Thank you.
Cayman. Um, yes, you carried out the amendment, Chainman. Making sense, many of the that it was still dull. The way it's been done. The, I've heard you say that it's what's already been done, way it's been done. And that, um, to be in a better position with longer terms and, um, through the occasions.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't want to interrupt, I just, I need to keep on topic, or get some comment on topic. But so that charter amendment you're referring to was passed.
Okay, I passed it earlier.
So this one is just related to filling in vacancies through a point.
There, there are two, two up for discussion tonight.
Right, but that's not, so I just, I just need to get the comments, your names, so that, sorry, that's totally fine. Yes.
And, you know, it's been repeated, that's what we need, and I still haven't discovered, and they don't take this, they don't take it serious. This, by all means, is about chairman, you know, for every state. The board is acting. Keeping danger of, you know, all the major democratic decisions to yourself. But I defer a, and while we then, before you get to it. I mean, you have democracy, it's about justice, don't know why you guys are.
My, uh, cheers to you. Um, just wanted to second what my wife said. Really, I, I always want to come up here with my voice in it. Anytime I feel a vote is taken away from me. And so appointment being a choice by me means something has been taken away. My, my ability to choose who my elected. So I want, even though y'all already know my position, I think it's necessary to stand up each man and voice my opinion on it. Before, where I have changed my mind.
Hello, my name is Devon Leavens from, uh, Old Mill Road. And I third what, uh, Callum Hart said, uh, to, uh, put with you, referendum. And I feel that this should go to referendum, yes, I think I've heard everyone say it was very important. And it seems like everything is rushed, railroaded. And the charter does need to change. But we should do it not piecemeal like what is going on. We need to gather together like we had the committee. Maybe form a new committee to go over everything in the charts, then present the full chart and then we'll go. Um, I'm trying to understand why the charter is being put piecemeal than anyone, and why it's being a resolution, even if it would be rare. Many of the resolutions, and anyone's being, why would we do this?
I, I can answer questions at the end.
At the end.
I, I don't want to take your time, if you're done, if you're done. So before anyone else comes up, just a question. The there was a committee, unfortunately, the, the committee kind of they all came together, most of the notes and the memos we have are from one member of the committee. Um, but it is, it is actually the responsibility of the elected officials to make the changes and pass the charter. Uh, and this has been actually a at least three year process, so this isn't being rushed or railroaded. Um, so that is the answer to that question. Uh, I'm sorry, but, uh, no, no. You'll have another chance to speak later, um, folks can get up and continue to speak.
For me, it's just a kind of question, it's a two step process. Whether we then part about applicant's program. They go on to apply, yeah. After that, who, who qualifies to be an applicant? Is it, yes, any of the residents? And then once that process of getting this is it the whole mission is doing, or how are they anybody? So that communicated activity.
Okay.
Yeah. The, 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 one step saying how you find when you select the person you need steps into that role.
Okay. Okay, so, um, to answer that question, the qualifications are determined by the charter already, as to determines if the person is eligible. The same way it's determined for elections. And then lastly, um, how deliberations happen, then that is going to be done through policy and procedure. Are there any other comments, unless I missed something?
Probably should be.
I'm sorry, I just, we can't, we can't address the commissioners directly, even if it's positive, okay, all right.
Yeah, you did, which, but if you do, if, if the current proposal affected the time that Mr. Urquhart's federal election would have taken place. In my humble opinion, Mr. Urquhart wouldn't be sitting here. Uh, that's just because of the way these are the elements of the board on. So, um, that's just the almost pure example of how you're taking away and suppressing the votes of citizens of town. So that's one point that I'll leave. The other point was, I'm not sure the gentleman here asked this, but how does this take place when you have four people left? I know you don't answer questions, but somebody may, maybe you'll answer that, right? If you have a tie of, of, of the four people, how does that work? Uh, presumably, uh, when I asked this question before, who decides? He said it was the commissioners, the remaining commissioners who are remaining. So there's a tie as to who they want to be the person, how does that work? She's, she won't answer.
I, I'm writing down your questions so I can answer them when you're done with your three minutes. I've answered everyone else's questions and I will answer yours. Okay. I am actually writing down what you're saying so I can answer your questions. I am sorry that that is frustrating, but that is what I need to do to be able to be responsive to you. So okay. Okay, so if there is a tie, I mean, I think frankly, we have a timeline in which we have to have somebody appointed by, and it's going to have to get worked out, right? Um, or we're going to be in violation of the charter. Certainly procedurally, that can, there can be internal procedures that address that. But I don't know that it needs to be addressed in the charter. So that up to our discussion, is there anyone else who would like to provide comments? And I see there's some new folks online, so if you want to provide comment, you're just going to raise your hand and our staff will allow you to speak. And then you can tell us your name and the street you live on. Okay, so there's no, appears to be no more comment on this item on the agenda, so we are going to move on to the second item on the agenda, which is B, um, in that Charter Amendment Resolution three dash twenty twenty five. I am going to turn that over to, um, our attorney to read that into the record and give us a summary, if we can, if we can um, allow the attorney to be heard, please, thank you.
This is a charter, permission for, to have a law and the various sections of the charter, um, modern updating, see all those. They use gender in the language and to make other non subs, these data. So for example, there's, there is a reference in the charter to sections of Article eighty one that no longer exist. And we're updating this to the tax property article. And then, and we've been through a couple of these things before. We've updated the references, no longer the Maryland State Health Commission. Uh, it is a state in there. In eighty two sixty three, we control a lot of ways. We have some is and hers that we took out to be done in neutral. There's a couple of things that we, um, updated to say during normal, rather than working hours, business hours. So those were the types of things that we did, registered, and we took out, they registered because that's for a lot of them with registration. So, uh, that's kind of the type of things, there's beyond that, maybe these are really mostly on the third, the first three pages, the one on board, uh, nation to is another reference to two hundred and twelve moves and provisions of the
So if you have comments on, it has to be on this amendment. If you come up again, state your name, the street you live on, and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, you would raise your hands.
Thank you. And it's um, it's maintained by us. And, um, generally, you'll be
Oh, God, did you say one or all people?
Hold on.
I didn't hear, I didn't.
Yeah, yeah.
You said honor all people.
Yeah.
Got you. Yeah, honor all people, yeah.
Anyone else on that? Great, um, writings today. All right, so that concludes the public hearing, um, for this evening. It is already after seven o'clock, does council or commission need any recess, or can we go right into our, our set? Okay, so five minute recess and we will begin the regular meeting at seven oh seven. So I am calling this regular town meeting to order at seven ten PM on Tuesday, August twenty sixth. If you would do a roll call for us. If you would do a roll call for us, please.
Commissioner Rose.
Presence.
Commissioner Tolbert.
Yes.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Yeah.
Commissioner Urkel.
Here.
I'm sure it is present. Town Public Work Director, Don Boland. You can keep David Burke here. Town Attorney, Karen Bopp.
Thank you. We'll review the agenda. Are there any changes or adjustments to the agenda? Staff, you do not have an adjustment. Okay. Hearing none, then we will proceed. Is there? Sorry, please signify agreement with the agenda by saying aye. Any abstentions? Is anyone opposed to the agenda? So we have two who did not vote at all. Also, are your aye for the agenda?
Yes.
I don't know. Well, so the the ordinance that I had drafted as a potential is just listed as ordinance twenty twenty-three and not as an introduction, which could complicate things. If we were trying to pass it to fix the elections, because it would not take effect before the elections. It isn't introduced tonight.
So actually, the town attorney and staff were drafting the changes that needed to be made before the election. And then my, my understanding at the last meeting was that town attorney and our town administrator were drafting the change, drafting the changes that need to be made before the next election. And that you were gonna draft the two separate ordinances that would be a real appeal and replace. And that would happen.
So my understanding at the end of the last meeting was that you were, did not want me to move forward on the two separate ordinances, or at least not right away. And so I was to come up with a list of what needed to be done immediately before the next election. And so that's what I put together.
So we can go back and check the record, but I, between staff and myself. They drafted changes, which we can talk about in administrative updates. But the changes that you have drafted were supposed to go to staff for review and incorporation. Not as a separate ordinance, it hasn't been reviewed for legal sufficiency. Prior to being
When I put it in that form and submitted it to staff, so I see Tom, what he gave us last week.
I don't know, I just saw it Monday. It was, I noticed it was on the desk Monday.
This, this right here, what he gave us last week?
No, 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 no. Gave to the staff, and that is the one that was printed and in the commissioner room.
So I guess what you're proposing as a change to the agenda is we want to consider introducing the ordinance that you
Correct.
Is there a second add to the agenda? Ordinance drafted by Commissioner. Hearing no second.
Second.
Okay. Would you call a vote on whether we're adding this to the agenda? I'm sorry, you have a question? Discussion. Okay. We can add it to the agenda and then realize it's not legally sufficient and choose not to vote on it or vote on it. So would you call a roll to add it to the agenda?
No.
Aye.
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 Okay, so it doesn't have a name, but it will replace item. So we, we're gonna vote whether we're gonna introduce it or not, so. Now we're gonna move on to the actual agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Would you call that for please? Thank you.
Mission.
Aye.
Mission over.
Aye.
Mayor Parkman.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Urkel.
Aye.
All right, now we'll get on to business. We are on, as I say, which is Charter Amendment Resolution oh one, twenty twenty-five. The section eighty-two dash thirty-two, and this is up for board vote. Does need to be read into the record again, I believe. Yeah. The hell are we? I'm sorry, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Town Administrator Anderson, to have someone read it into the record and direct, direct to who is gonna do everything.
As the attorney graphic, you read.
So the Charter Amendment Resolution before is Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners. And all of them are demanding section two, perineum vacancies with a charter. Alter the process for filling vacancies on the board. Providing for the filling of vacancies for the first three years of filling vacancies during the first ten months of last year. By appointment by the commission, providing the vacancy created in sixty days of the general election. Will remain vacant until the election. As a result of what we discussed at the conference here. The town could, so what the law says is that the title of a Charter Amendment Resolution is supposed to describe the subject. So the subject is the filling of vacancies on what is now the the town console when the other charter becomes a factor. So you could after it says to alter the process for vacancies on the board of commissioners, you could put an end there to the title. That is one way, or provide or add providing for the filling of vacancies. And then it would be instead of resident, say for the one year prior to the next general election by special election. And if less than one year prior to the next general election by what you
Okay. We're gonna need a motion to change it. Do you repeat? So I have the
Well, it would be like each way with the
I, I'm Well, I think we have to put it on the table first. Do we have to put, we have to we have to
You can write it to the record. We move second discuss.
Yes, so, okay, so this is a little, technically per Robert's rules, before we have public comment, we're supposed to actually have a motion on the table. That's not generally how we generally allow public comment first before we have a motion on the table. In this case, because we're about to modify something, and I think it helps the public to comment on what we're modifying, if we put the motion on the table, but before we vote, we have public comment. So I want to explain that clearly to the public because we're about to make changes. And I want you to understand that what I want is you to be able to comment on what we're actually voting on. I'm not trying to subvert a process. So there can be a motion first to approve. Is there a motion to approve Charter Amendment Resolution one dash twenty-five? Section eighty-two thirty-two. We have to have it on the table before we can amend it. Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any amendments?
Yes. First amendment is to the title. Move that we amend the title to read a Charter Amendment Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Oakmarboro, amending section eighty-two dash thirty-two vacancies of the Charter of the Town of Oakmarboro to alter the process for filing or fulfilling vacancies on the Board of Commissioners. End.
I will second that.
You said, what did you say at the end?
Basically ending it after
Oh, so a period there.
Period, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? So hearing no discussion, if you would call a vote on the motion, please.
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Over.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Urkel.
It's a period.
I'm staying.
All right, you implied you had another memo.
I didn't. In section eighty-two thirty-two B, the last statements of successful candidate with the lowest shall fill the vacancy. I move that we amend highest.
I will second that.
To go forward.
In eighty, section eighty-two thirty-three and section C, there's a vacancy occurs less than sixty days prior to the general election. At the end of that paragraph, it says
I don't think I'm saying here.
At the end of that paragraph, it says the successful candidate with the lowest vote total shall fill the vacancy. I'm moving to change that to highest.
So I believe that the problem here is in the wording. So there there would be multiple successful candidates. There is the, I think the idea here is that you would have at least two people that are running for a four-year term, then you would have one person who is running for a two-year term. And so there would be multiple successful candidates, but of those the one with the lowest is the one who gets the two-year term.
Yes.
I believe that was the intended, and so I think that needs to be clarified.
That is correct. I remember that now that you said that. Though like, though
So lowest is, lowest is correct, so.
What if there's let's say there's four seats on the table, one of those being but there's seven people running.
You have to be a successful candidate. I think we discussed this last time. The successful candidate with the lowest vote total. So they have to be successful, which means of your top four. Okay, the lowest vote total.
We'll get to two years.
We get the remainder of the term that that commissioner has, which could be two or three years. I, I think because there's been confusion, the question to the attorney is, is there another way to interpret this? That would be the person who comes in last gets the remainder of the term. I think it's successful candidate. No, because then how do you determine who fills the vacancy and who gets a whole term? That's why this is here.
So if you look in D, it provides for the multiple town agents, council vacancies, right?
I think it's because you have a general election, right? And in a general election, you either have two people up or three people up. And so the idea was that the two highest vote getters will have full terms and the lowest
And then the next lower
Third or the fourth, the next lowest vote getter would come through this term. I think it makes sense. It's just as long as successful candidate can only be in, you know, as long as the sentence can only be interpreted. Right. And I think that is and I can't remember if it was you or Attorney Ford, it said that that was why successful candidate was in here. Remember in that conversation.
And incredibly, Lynn was the one who wrote it. Who was working on this language with you. So I mean, sitting here right now, I think it makes sense. If you're concerned, I'm just trying to figure figure out how you are going to define a success candidate. In that is the one who gets the highest amount of votes. So when we say successful candidate with the lowest vote total.
Right.
Perhaps it's the candidate. Yes, highest. So you've got the number of vacancies being filled. And it's the next time. So if you have two, if you have hopefully, you're only gonna have two, right? Would you say the third highest?
I think I have a solution, but I think we have to vote your amendment down first. So the successful candidate that qualifies for the office of town commissioner with the lowest vote total, right? So you still, that clarifies, you have to qualify for the, qualify for the office of commissioners. No, because that's different. That, okay. That qualifies. Qualifies by vote by See what I'm saying? I think it's, I, I really think it's okay the way it is, based on what Attorney Board told us.
I hate to suggest this, but we can also defer a vote on this tonight.
Right. I mean, I think we've talked about. Right. Right.
And possibly go
Do you want to rescind your motion or do you want to
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, and I'll second your rescind. I think I have to second that, yes, because I seconded his motion.
I think you did.
So I rescind, I seconded his motion, so if he rescinds it, I have to still second.
Right.
Okay, so. Or agree to it. Okay, you've rescinded, I've agreed to it. Now we have this other motion on the table, and so I think we should discuss whether we want to rescind the motion to approve this. And entertain a motion to do is it defer it? Or what's the proper term? It's not table.
Motion until September, your September.
So I, I don't, it's your motion on the table, so it's up to you to, to remove it or us to discuss.
I will send the motion to you.
Okay, and I will second that.
And then I will defer this to the September town meeting.
Okay, and I will second that. So we'll call a vote on that. Should we take public, when, when we're removing it from the agenda?
Well, you just, you're yes, you're gonna defer action so that we
We don't
It's not
On the agenda, so we're gonna
We're gonna make changes to it, given
Yeah.
what was said tonight.
Yeah. So if you Yeah, so if the vote to defer fails, then we'll have to do something different. But if you can call our
Would we still get commissioner comments before we?
Well, we're gonna defer it, so we're gonna take it off the agenda.
Other changes still need to be made.
Okay, so let's have motions on the
So
We've rescinded the motion, so can you reintroduce it so that we can talk about it?
I don't know so much as a motion as a discussion. So in the July meeting.
So I'm just, I'm trying to maintain like some Roberts rules, so if we can put it on the table and then make the motion.
I make a motion that we review the July meeting minutes to ensure that all of the changes that were discussed at that meeting are actually reflected in this document, because at least one is not.
Okay, so I will second that motion. Would you call a vote on that motion?
Commissioner Rose.
Aye.
Commissioner Over.
Aye.
Mayor Parkman.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Urkel.
Aye.
Commissioner Gary.
All right, so now we have the All right, so now we have the motion order. Yes, maybe that was out of order.
The motion on the table for this to the, the September meeting that we didn't.
Vote on. So we need to vote on the deferment to the September meeting. Hold on. We did that vote out of water because we didn't have the right. I'm trying to allow Commissioner Arc light to share his concerns while also following the signatures. Um, so there's a motion on the table to defer this to the September regular town meeting. Yes?
Yeah.
Would you call that vote? If you can just call her. I seconded it, yeah, so that mo-, so it was made by Commissioner Colbert. I seconded it, and now we need to vote to defer it to the September meeting, so if you can call that.
Aye.
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 But that's.
Yes, so we are gonna move on to Charter Amendment Resolution three dash twenty twenty-five. I'm gonna turn that to our town administrator to turn it over to the staff.
Attorney. NGD.
Charter Amendment Resolution eight five twenty-five, Charter Amendment Resolution, the order of the town amending various sections of Charter of the town above the law, modernize the Charter by updating state law references to use general neutral language and make other non-substantive amendments.
All right. Is there any more discussion? Like, are there, are there gonna be amendments? Should we put a motion on the table?
Oh, for it.
Really good questions. Questions and amendment, or, or if you want to make an amendment, make a motion to put it on the table.
So I guess my question is also, have the changes that were suggested in the July meeting been introduced here? Because at least in section ten, um, the attorney at the time was directed to fix the section numbers that are listed in section ten, and that has not been done. It's page twenty-four of the packet, page five of the Charter Amendment Resolution, um, being further resolved in the town clerk of the town of Upper Marlboro, or in the absence of a town clerk, the town administrator is specifically instructed to carry out the provisions of section two, three, four, and five hereof. But, since because that there are more than one sections of modifications that has shifted, and so the, um.
It should be seven, eight, nine.
Uh, yeah, uh, six, seven, eight, nine.
Okay, so let's actually, let's put it on the table so you can propose that amendment, so that we can make that amendment.
Um, my proposal is actually that we review if anything else was missed from the July meeting and did not get changed in this document.
So that was the only change that was made to this section?
I, I do not recall, and because of the meeting minutes are not written down, and we would need to listen to the audio, I have not had a chance to verify what other changes might have been prescribed to this document.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we review that all of the changes that were proposed in the July meeting have been made to this document. So you have to make a motion to defer or. Can I make a motion that we defer this until the next meeting so that it can be reviewed, that all of the changes that were discussed in the July meeting have been?
Is there a second?
Hello. Okay.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I'll just restate that that was the only, um, change that I had for this, um, but would you call a vote on the deferment?
Commissioner Colbert?
No.
Commissioner Colbert?
No.
Mayor Parker?
Nay.
And Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is there, are there, we have another motion? Or shall we take public comment first? Okay, we want to take public comment before we put it on the table.
Yeah, I would just like to say that that section ten is actually a reference to seven, eight, nine. And does not, um, contain any of the changes to the charter. It simply is that section ten acknowledges that the clerk of the town, um, and the gases, the town administrator is instructed to carry out the provisions of seven, eight, nine.
If we could put it on the table, and, well, we don't have to, we can take public comment first.
To approve Charter Amendment, uh, Resolution oh-three twenty-twenty-five, state changing.
I, I can second that. Um, and I will propose an amendment to Charter Resolution twenty-twenty, oh-three twenty-twenty-five, that in section ten that the reference to sections two, three, four, and five be changed to state section seven, eight, and nine. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Would you call the? Well, we're gonna vote on that, and then we'll have the small ordinance for folks to comment on. I think that's a better way to move forward.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert? Mayor Parker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Uh.
And.
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Okay. Now let's take public comment on the amendment, the Charter Amendment Resolution prior to discussion and voting. If you have public comment, come up to the podium if you're in the room. If you are online, please raise your hand. Now, do you mind turning on the lights for the, it looks like it's getting a little dark back there. Thank you. All right, hearing no public comment on this matter, is there any additional commissioner discussion?
Yes. Uh, so also in section ten, there is the, uh, mention of section five, which is now section nine. Um, and then as it um, directs the town clerk to do stuff, but then in the absence of a town clerk, the town administrator, um, the signature block has town administrator when we now have a town clerk.
Um, were you planning on signing this one? Because you've carried this through.
Right, yes.
So.
I, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, so our town administrator is planning on signing this, and our lawyer is nodding that that is accepted.
I mean, that is wrong, the town administrator. If you remember when we started down this road, the position of town clerk.
Right.
Yeah, so that is why it is written the way it was written.
Yes, and I think it's, it's not fair to our town clerk to ask them to sign off on ordinance that they weren't part.
And by the town administrator has said.
Right. So, do you, um, rate the section five to section nine as an amendment?
Uh, yes, I propose that in section ten, that we change the reference to return receipts of the mailing referred to in section five to instead say return receipts of the mailing referred to in section nine.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion on that? Would you call a vote on that for us?
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner. Aye.
Aye.
Um, Commissioner Colbert, you had a comment on the agenda.
No, I was just going to try to alternate mostly to amend any.
Oh, any reference.
Any section references can be appropriate. Section reference, now that changes have. But that's all that there is.
Right.
All that's actually, that's not necessary.
Those are the ones I caught. I'm not sure if, there may be others.
So, well, I can make the motion.
Go ahead, me.
Uh, to ensure that any previous section references are updated to current licenses, uh, based on the state changes, uh, that are being adopted.
I will second that. Any discussion? Okay, would you call a vote on that?
Uh, Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Burke?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
Any further discussion on the Charter Amendment? Okay, would you call the vote? And just to clarify, what we're voting on is to approve Charter Amendment Resolution three dash twenty twenty-five. That motion was made by Commissioner Colbert and seconded by my.
Commissioner Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert?
Aye.
Mayor Parker?
Aye.
Commissioner Paul?
Aye.
Commissioner Erb?
Aye.
Commissioner Carey?
All right, we're gonna go on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of general government job descriptions. That is up for vote. Um, but there is a piece that needs to be read in the record. I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'm sure.
Good, good evening, everyone. Um, this is a, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, approving job descriptions for the town administrator, deputy town administrator, town clerk, administrative assistant, special assistant director of finance and human resources, human resources general bookkeeper, administrative assistant, chief of staff, director of public works, foreman, crewly, uh, for, for the Department of Public Works and crew member for, for the Department of Public Works. Now, the director of finance and human resources is a position that's not actively filled, but in the future, as, as the town grows and things change, um, that job description will still be on the books there. Chief of staff will still be on the books, although it's not filled. Director of public works, um, if you look at various uh, areas of record, uh, that, that position is sometimes described as superintendent, but now it's clearly defined as director of public works. And, uh, you guys were, uh, the, the job descriptions were all, um, in, in the packet there. So if you have any questions?
There any questions?
Um, yes. Um, does it make sense to approve these jobs that are not currently filled when the responsibilities listed in them have now been passed on to other positions? And so, if they were filled, something would need to be changed anyway, because, you know, as, as it's worded, you would, you would have to change at least that position to take away the responsibilities that have now been defer, say, for instance, the chief of staff. Um, when we had the chief of staff, we did not have a town administrator, and so some of the duties in, under the chief of staff seem to be, um, yeah, assume full management responsibility, find functions, services and activities of the town, including overseeing assigned departments and divisions, which does not seem to fit in our current, what do you call that, uh, like delegation of power.
So, I mean, you want me to? So, but with respect to that, I mean, in chief of staff position, um, some of the other things that you'll see there that I didn't change yet, because the charter hasn't officially changed yet, would be direct report president and board of town commissioners. That would obviously become, uh, the town administrator. Um, I could ask that the chief of staff oversee some, if in my absence, or the deputy town clerk's absence, or the deputy town administrator's absence, to oversee some of the functions of the town just temporarily. This is more along the line of succession planning in, in general government as well. So it's not that this, the primary functions, that those would be the primary functions, but they would be able to exercise some of those roles if I were to ask that we do so.
Well, isn't the, uh, what's her official job title? The deputy town manager is the one currently also is unlisted as if the town administrator, well, takes over, um, to I thought there was something in there about. No, that's, because that's a special. If the director is the town. Um, well, there is put into the wrong line in this. But I, I believe it's the the deputy town administrator is the one who is listed as taking over in the absence of the town administrator.
Right. So there could be a lot of different circumstances. Perhaps the town administrator and the deputy town administrator may not be available. That's possible. So you do have someone there to fill the void temporarily, right? So that's, again, it's along the lines of succession, there's a one, a two, and a three if needed.
Oversees the preparation of town meetings, managing the schedule of items and content of staff reports to include it in the town agenda packet. There are a lot of tasks in here that are in other roles. And so when you have, you, you end up with the potential for multiple people to say in their job description that they are responsible for this. And so I think it, it doesn't make sense to approve the chief of staff role here because something is going to need to be edited if we bring in a chief of staff. You know, if they get these responsibilities, then we need to go back and modify other job descriptions, for who, who has responsibility.
Can I make a suggestion? I don't know if this is, would work, um, but what if we added a, I think it would be in, like, an additional now therefore it be resolved, right? That the direct report and overlapping roles within, oh, sorry, direct report and roles within the organizational chart be permitted, right, let's start again, that the job descriptions, their direct report, and certain roles be permitted to be adjusted with changes in the organizational structure of the town. Would that potentially address that? Because you could come in, a town administrator, if you weren't here, another town administrator would come in and say, I don't want a deputy town administrator, I want a chief of staff. And one of the things I know we struggled with when you came in was your limitations in hiring staff because you were hindered by the job descriptions. Um, and I think this allows flexibility. Um, and obviously, we have to approve cert-, we have to approve with the budget hires. So we're going to have the chance to approve certain roles. It's not gonna be without us, but I think minor changes, um, should be able to be in the purview of a professional staff, as long as they're not, they're in alignment with an organizational structure that's approved. Would that work from a legal perspective? You're not sure.
So I have not worked very closely looking for answers on each of these scriptures.
Right.
So I am not complete, I mean, I've read them, but I'm not even wrong.
Right.
But I haven't had conversations with him about these technical issues. Um, so that's something that probably leads to a smaller, um, movement. And make sure that your charter amendment that you adopted is going to be effective since September.
Excellent.
Um, and so we're going to want to make sure that, and, and I think Mr. Anderson's already referenced that.
Right, the changes need to be made.
They reflect the new Florida government. Um, and I presume. And I presume that in doing, going through that, we would take into account what those new roles are. And you can make those adjustments as we as we go through that. So um, whether or not the town needs these positions is up for the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
To decide, right?
Right.
Um, if you believe that each of the job descriptions presented to you are jobs that are going to be, um, billed or possibly billed and you want to. And that they accurately reflect, they want what you want each of those roles to be. I think it's difficult to in a general sense, to make sure that each of them is is what you're looking to make.
Right, we are making, that's what we're being asked right now.
Right.
Right. And I think from a staffing perspective, that I think with our public works director hiring and our new hires that you would like these generally approved right now and then. Um.
And we can go back and revisit the ones that, you know.
All those other two older ones. Um, in September as a sort of administrative approval.
And those roles or duties that the town administrator may confer upon others. Those could be tweaked to say to say just that in the absence of the town administrator. Or what is needed? That the town administrator would absent and those were conveyed to them and.
What about any has needed?
And he also said it may oversee, directed or something like that.
Well, as needed, kind of like a sum bill a lot.
Um, so I think since we're going to be looking at these again, once we make the changes, my understanding is that you need us to pass this to make your day to day life function properly, um, for right now. Is that accurate?
That's it.
Okay, so if we can approve these right now, knowing that on September tenth, they're going to have to be changed anyway. Um, if if you have other items that you missed, um, bringing up at the last work session, if you can email them to the town administrator, so that when they come back to us at the end of September, do have the adjustments made for the charter. Um, then it will be a simple approval. You have a concern.
I have a few questions. Um, one, I just want to clarify that these that were like, all of these job descriptions were now as a part of the budget that were submitted and approved for FY twenty six, correct? This is being done to if we get to a point and as we're doing next budget, if these positions, if the the need arises, these positions are going to be available. Okay. Um, my second question is, and maybe I miss this as part of the discussion. And you're saying that going to be changes at the September tenth, what's the utility of passing this right now?
I was going to ask the same question.
Work session is on the ninth of the tenth.
The ninth, sorry.
Which matters in this case.
Well, I mean, at at this point right now, we have I have a staff member, uh, with the title that doesn't necessarily reflect their actual job duties right now. So it's important to at least align that, right? Um, we actually, there are two staff members that their current job duties don't align with their actual titles. And I wanted to make sure that those things were actually corrected. And, um, so that's why it's important that at least some of these are approved tonight. So that those job job descriptions and the actual job functions that are happening right now are aligned.
Does it matter that we have to do it now versus next month?
I think we have to do it now and next month. I think that's that's right, like, because next month, the direct report is going to be different, but right now we have staff members that are working with job descriptions that don't match their jobs. And if I was a staff member and I was working with a job description that didn't match my job, I would want the Board of Commissioners care enough to make that fixed, even if it means they have to look at something twice. Just me. If we need to put, if for everyone's comfort, we need to pull out just those job descriptions, we can go ahead and do that. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I I my concern again is is approving the whole suite of them with the understanding that we're going to have to make changes. I I I I think that leaves us in a bit of a position. If there if there are specific job descriptions uh, that are, you know, would not be subject to additional changes and they're presented in the way that they need to be presented right now, then perhaps we approve those job descriptions and review and revise the others on the September tenth.
I I suspect that they would all end up needing changes because of the change in title from town administrator to town manager and border, even if it's board of town council.
Yep.
Yeah.
Right, so we had, we did have these in front of us at the work session. Um, so if we if we can have do this so that we're following Robert, we want to put this on the table first and then amend it to remove the other one to to cut it down to only certain number.
We can amend our solution to remove the ones, so let's say the ones that are causing, for example, are the.
Do we need it on the table before we amend it?
So, you know, we're just, there were two ways.
Okay.
Doing it. One is you can amend it and then make a motion to approve it as amended.
Okay.
Or you can introduce it and then move to amend it.
Okay. Okay. All right, so what are the job descriptions?
Now, the human resources general. Yeah. Um, that individual staff member's title is special assistant, but that's the job description there.
Is there another one?
The administrative assistant is who is their actual title is deputy town clerk, administrative assistant, administrative assistant, but they're not performing the deputy town.
Director.
Bond. Director of Public Works.
Which, yeah, you may have job descriptions that you need change more immediately. I mean, did you need like crew leader, did you need any of that updated for your hiring?
Is crew lead already?
Yeah, well, good. So, I mean, it's a bit of an.
The crew member job description and that your crew lead is performing the function or described in the current job description. And your job description is accurate.
Hmm, and summer intern, which is new.
Right, but we don't have a summer intern because it's not summer anymore. So, okay.
Okay, say those again.
So I'm going to read it kind of as the amendment that's being proposed. So we're proposing to amend resolution. Oh, it doesn't have a number. What is the, do we know what resolution says? You guys look it up while I talk. We're proposing to amend the resolution before us to, um, approve job descriptions for administrative assistant, human resources generalist and crew member, Department of Public Works. Let me know when you have a resolution number needed. Must have had a lot of ordinance.
So which video amending the HR special generalist?
So that, so if we propose it as amended, it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the town of Upper Marlboro approving job descriptions for the administrative assistant, human resources generalist and crew member, Department of Public Works. Everyone feels okay about that? Are there any other questions before we do? The public understands the, what we're actually going to want them voting on. So if you have a comment, if you could please again up to the podium, say your name and the street you live on, please try to limit your comments to three minutes. And if you're online, just raise your hand and we'll give you permission to speak. Hearing being no comments, um, is there a motion to approve char- uh, resolution twenty twenty five oh three?
Um, a couple of quick questions. Um, in the administrative assistant, uh, bullet items two and three. If they're recent for both of them.
Can you tell us page?
Uh, that is page thirty five in the packet.
Administrative question.
So there are essential functions. Number two is respond and request for information assistance from town residents, business owners. Three is respond to requests for information assistance from town residents, citizens and business owners via phone, email and in person visits. I mean, that in both of them.
So you're moving that we strike bullet number two from the administrative assistant?
Um.
Job description?
I'm not sure, because three limits them into what sort of modalities they handle calls, whereas it has more items because it also citizens, which I'm not sure how that differs from business owners, but.
I mean, we just have to say respond to requests from the public.
Strike at bullets two and three, add a new bullet that says respond to requests from the public. Are there any objections to that? Okay. So the the amendment to administrative assistant is to strike bullets two and three and replace it with respond to requests to the public. Anything else?
From the public.
Respond to requests from the public.
Taking.
Commissioner.
No.
Oh, hold on, there's no motion on the table.
And I will make a motion that we.
Well, I've put that as kind of part of the amendment already, if that makes sense. So so that, what you've proposed as an amendment is going into the approved resolution twenty twenty five oh three as amended now includes the change that we just discussed, since there were no objections to the change.
I'm trying to find the make sure that the loving notes are. The crew number one. Um, I actually did have a question about the crew number one. So the it is just the formatting of it, that so many of the other ones have a working environment, physical demand section, whereas the crew member one is on, it's built into the essential functions as opposed to calling that out. I don't know if that was a there was a reason for that. Uh, it's page fifty seven of the packet. So so if you compare fifty six, which is the crew lead, there is a on on page fifty six, there's specifically a working environment, physical demands section for that. And fifty seven, they're kind of, there it it exists, but it's in the essential functions as opposed to being called out separately. And I didn't know if there was a reason for that.
Crew members.
So, so just something to be considered for the September update of getting them consistent in their formatting.
Anything else? If we can try to, you know, have these things for the work sessions, just so that we can keep these meetings tighter, that would be idea. Okay, is there a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty five oh three as amended?
Delete.
Is there a second? Let's. Um. Okay, would you call that? Oh, wait, we have to take public. Did I offer to take public comment?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so we waited to take public comment. Public didn't have any comment. Um, go ahead. Aye.
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 Yeah. We'll move on to the economic development holding group's plan. Um, for presented to us as an overview. Do you want me to turn this over to town administrator? I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Colbert, who is the liaison for the development work group.
Of course. So this is just the written version of the, uh, plan that was presented by economic development work group chair David Herbert and vice chair, the Chief of McDonald during the work session. Um, the plan and the framework for how the work group would, uh, engage interact uh, with the town and laid out from bold for the work group, uh, not committing any funding, it's not committing any resources, every framework, uh, and the set of, um, goals and measurable yardsticks by which progress can be, uh, communicated to the board. Uh, there are things in here that are forward looking, uh, like being a part of in, uh, implementing the town strategic action plan. Once that is something that has been presented, approved, uh, and move forward, the economic development work group will be a part of that and lays out some strategies for engaging with county, state partners, business owners, doing the business retention and recruitment type of activity, providing resources or resource fair for business. This is just a guiding document for the group to do their work and and moving the economic developer to the town forward.
Any questions? Um, we will take public comment on this. If there's public comment, please come to the podium, state your name and street. And, um, if you're online, raise your hand so we can give you microphone access.
Looking through here, it looks like a comprehensive framework, obviously. Successful to be in the details, but I noticed one thing that might be added here. And that is to have the the group look at identifying obstacles and challenges regular part or regular part of it. Say that permitting and licensing processes that be a talent for businesses that I noticed there is, uh, there is legislative engagement. Um, which says advocate for payment policy, it's kind of general, but seems to be to want to help businesses to locate and grow in the town. And one of the things we have to make sure they can do is get through the regular process, which in both the state regulations and county regulations can, you know, can be owners. So my suggestion is to put some specific into this strategy.
If there are no other comments, is there any further discussion? I'm unhesitant to dictate something down to the, to a volunteer committee.
Yeah.
Um, but you could bring that suggestion to them.
Yes.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
Then is everyone's
on that topic?
Okay.
Um, sure. I I think survey the rules useful maybe at a meeting, um, like what we did when, uh, Better City four year. Um, I think that in my mind of scientists, there is a lot of it, um, in. a lot of it inside the science of of surveys and customer media gets somebody who's expert or who's so I think it could be better to, you know, call a meeting of of town people, so it could be more of a discussion.
This related to the Economic Development Working Group?
Yes.
Sure, okay.
Because that it's on, you had here on the app. That's that's the change.
Okay.
Agreed, that's also a part of the strategy, and in the communication section, one of the first bullets under methods is regular town hall meeting for Q and A session. It's part of the.
It's not really a discussion right now, it's so you're if you're done with your comment, I'll let Commissioner, sorry. Okay. So you I I really have to have to maintain some order up here. I know that that is the challenge, that that meetings did not always have order in them, I am trying to make sure that the public here has all the information they have to make their comments, I'm trying to make sure you can be heard, I'm trying to write what you say so that we can respond to it. I am doing my best to run these meetings in a professional manner, and I appreciate everyone's appreciate everyone's assistance in that. So, okay, so I need to, I need to, it's not it's not public, it's not public comment, I do have to maintain, I need your help to do this. Commissioner Colbert. Okay, let's let's go back, so is there any other public comment at all on this before we start discussing it internally again? Okay, thank you, so. I think this works, I think it has multiple ways to communicate with people. My professional experience is as a town planner, and when I do that, it's really important that I engage an entire community because they are usually developing a twenty-year plan for how they're going to develop, and so we actually use an approach very similar to what is in this plan, which is to hit them with surveys, town meetings, open house, like all the things, so I think that was really expressing forethought if if the I I need us to try to work together as a community to make these meetings successful. Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other comments?
I don't know if it's the comments so much on the document specifically, but.
Commissioner Urquhart is speaking, please, if we can allow him to be heard.
I believe it was on July thirtieth. County Representative Blakely had a Westphalia retail meeting. And it seemed like the county was all in and helping a developer build out a shopping center in Westphalia, and I don't know if we can get any support from county council people in that regard, even, you know, they were going to a meeting in Las Vegas to identify well, I guess the most part that's not local chains that would be there, you know, people to come in, so I don't know if even talking to these, you know, the people that are doing that sort of an effort of I want to say they're rejects, but the people that they didn't feel were a good fit for their shopping centers that might be a good fit for ours, if there's any you know, folks like that that we can talk to to try and get leads on building in empty space.
I think you mentioned or someone mentioned that at the last meeting, and I think that David and Rashida really liked that suggestion, so. Is there a motion to approve EDW Street Plan as presented? Is there a second?
I second.
Any last discussion? Would you call that vote for us if it's? So. We are now discussing something the public does not have, but it would be find out what while we're talking. Assistant Thomas, can you find out what our next ordinance number would be, because we did agree to put this on here? So. We're discussing this document that presented by Commissioner Urquhart to us. And it is an ordinance to clarify and correct the conduct of voter registration, conduct of elections in general relating to town elections. And it would be ordinance number. Sorry, I'm asking you to get it too fast. Ordinance number five, twenty twenty-five, so I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Urquhart to.
All right, yes, as many of us have copies of it, I read it out. The Board of Commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro, Ordinance Twenty Twenty-Five dash oh five, session regular town meeting introduced August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Date enacted blank. An ordinance to clarify and correct the conduct of voter registration, conduct of elections in general relating to town elections, whereas a division of the town charter is entitled Registration Candidates in Elections, and includes sections eighty-two dash nineteen voters through eighty-two thirty-five penalties. And whereas section eighty-two thirty-four of the Town Charter Regulation and Control states that the Board of Commissioners have the power to provide by ordinance in every respect not covered by the provisions of said charter for the conduct of registration, candidacy, and elections, and for the prevention of fraud in connection therewith, and for a recount of ballots in case of doubt or fraud, and whereas Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three oh two entitled an ordinance to regulate and provide for the conduct of voter registration, maintenance of records, conduct of elections, certification of election results, and penalties related there to and generally related to town elections was enacted on March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas Article Twenty Twenty-three oh two has internal inconsistencies and prescribed procedures that do not comply with the Town Charter. And whereas Sections four dash one oh eight of the Local Government Article of Maryland Annotated Code states, one, that a qualified voter may vote in a municipal election by absentee ballot, two, that a municipality shall provide a procedure to vote by absentee ballot, three, that a municipality shall not require an individual to provide a reason that the individual will be unable to vote in person on election day in order to vote by absentee ballot. And for the municipality to use any method to enable absentee voters to vote, including any facilities to transmit and receive applications of absentee ballots. And whereas Section four dash one oh eight point one of the Local Government Local Government Article of Maryland Annotated Code states that as to voting in a municipal election, one, a person is subject to offenses and penalties related to voting specified under Section sixteen dash two oh one of the Election Law Article, and who the state prosecutors or the state's attorney for the county in which municipal election was held, and where the offenses alleged to have occurred may prosecute person for the offense. And whereas Section eighty-two dash fifty-nine of the Town Charter Authority to Employ Personnel states the town shall have the power to employ such officers and employees as deemed necessary to execute the power and duties provided by the Charter of State law and to operate the town government. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners, the Town of Upper Marlboro, State of Maryland does hereby ordain and enact as follows.
So, hold on, because I'm not sure anyone is retaining all of that. So can you summarize?
The most significant one is the fourth, whereas Article Four Twenty-three oh two has internal inconsistencies and prescribed procedures that do not comply with the Town Charter.
So I think I think that the question is what what are you, in summary, what are you proposing in section and section, which you're saying you've identified the.
Okay, so the section, whatever, so then the actual body of it, there are A through P of clarifications and corrections to the ordinance. So I mean, the the wherestas were just setting up the justification for it, and the majority of that was taken straight from Twenty Twenty-three oh two. But, so, the following, the section one, the following clarification corrections are made to Ordinance Twenty Twenty-three oh two. A, the terms election supervisor chair and election chair refer to the chairperson of the Board of Supervisors of Elections. B, the terms Board of Supervisors and Board of Elections Supervisors report to the Board of Supervisors of Elections because they were just inconsistent through the document and what they call those rules. C, should there be a conflict between town and state law or the conduct of elections, and the state law is not generally applicable to municipal elections, the town law shall take priority. If the state law is specifically to mandate how local and municipal elections are run, then the state law shall take priority. That's a reference to Section B in that, and that is because it says state law that we just, I forget exactly how it's worded. Ordinance Twenty Twenty.
I I think, like, if we can have a summary, because I think my concern is going to be that this needs to go, the lawyer needs to take this and do something with it. Staff has already prepared a document that addresses these things legally, and so you're reading a sort of into the record. But what it says doesn't change for me whether this is legally sufficient to introduce, and in my opinion, it's not. So I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but I don't want to have you, you know, having to speak for a long time and losing your voice over this.
Well.
We will have it in front of us, so we can read it.
Well, as it's not in the packet, let me finish reading it into the record, so anyone who wants to.
You can just read it directly.
All right, so back to Section one D, town elections shall be held on the second Tuesday of November of every odd number of years, that is Section three dot F and Section six. E, the town clerk shall finalize the town supplemental voter registration day within one day after registration is closed. Section six dot B dot one. F, in accordance with Section eighty-two dash twenty-three of the Charter, the town clerks will give at least two weeks' notice their registration deadline and election day in a paper of general circulation, Section six A, six B, three, six D one, and six H. Item G, absentee ballots shall be made in person by either the voter or their duly authorized agent, Section seven dot seven A. H, the town clerk or their designated shall collect absentee ballots from the town's post office box prior to the closing of polls, Section seven D. I, the polls shall be open from eight AM to eight PM on election day, Section eight. J, the town clerk shall announce the closing of the polls five minutes before closing of the polls, Section eight B three. K, electronic devices may be used by the supervisor of the Board of Elections to report and broadcast the ballot count, Section eight C. L, all absentee ballots must be received by the close of polling on the election day to be counted in the election, Section eight C. Emergency absentee ballot should be hand-delivered to the town clerk by the duly authorized agent, Section two E. M, any deadlines for citizens or candidates that fall on a weekend or town holiday shall be extended to fall on the next day that the town offices are open. N, any deadlines for the town or its staff that fall on a weekend or town holiday shall be moved forward to the preceding day that the town offices are open. O, voting secrecy shall be the responsibility of the Board of Supervisors of Elections, Section ten D. P, the Board of Supervisors of Elections may meet at intervals as specified for the Board of Elections, Section ten C. Section two, separability, if any section, subsection, paragraph, sentence, clause, or disordance will be declared invalid for any reason, such decisions shall not affect remaining portion of this ordinance, which shall remain in full force and effect, and to this end, the provisions of the ordinance are hereby declared to be serviceable. Section three, be it further enacted, that this ordinance shall take effect twenty days after its adoption by the Town of Upper Marlboro, and the town clerk is directed to publish notice of this ordinance in a newspaper general circulation for the town, adopted this blank day of blank, twenty twenty-five, and then I just said signature block of section.
In paragraph one, two, three, four, you have your whereas ordinate, is it, did you meant to say ordinance or ordinate?
Oh, you're right, that is, that is a typo.
Two questions to have, this is more of a process than a substance question.
Okay.
But Ron, has the lawyer had a chance to review this in its entirety?
So I did review it, and I spoke with Mr. Anderson. One of the the items that we thought was going to be on your agenda tonight is the recodification. And so as a result of your last meeting, I talked with Civic Plus to see if we could get the election changes into what was going to come for you. Even though it was not included in what they had given us to adopt as the as the recodification, okay? So we worked through that, and I added A, B, and then there were that were addressed, in looking at some of the items in here. Mr. Anderson and I thought that that could wait till later, because part of the problem we have right now is you're in between things, or you're almost in between things, right? So this particular is supposed to either enact a section or amend a section or what have you, so then you go, are we amending the twenty twenty-three oh two ordinance? Or, but that's all going to change when you do the codification, so then we said, since we're trying to incorporate the election items into the codification and have everything in place for the upcoming November election, that is how we came to the conclusion that, well, we could do this as an emergency ordinance. So we were trying to take what had been said here, take the things that were going to directly impact the upcoming election, and then take the other ones and address them later. So that's.
That's what I would call us agreeing at the last meeting.
Okay.
So this is making the news as an emergency ordinance tonight?
No, this, we all agreed to add the consider, this is, this is was drafted by Commissioner Urquhart. Staff took the direction we gave them at the last meeting and took a different approach that dealt with the inconsistencies that need to be. I don't know if anyone else recalls, but we had something from Commissioner Urquhart, we all sort of said, staff, can you address those inconsistencies that need to be fixed before the November election? And then we will, and then we asked Commissioner Urquhart to draft two separate ordinances for us to consider separately. This is something different from all of that, staff did as directed. And so that ordinance, I believe, would be up to be in discussed at the work session on the ninth, am I, do I have this correct? And then twenty-third, because it's an emergency ordinance now, because it has to be in place before the election, on the twenty-third, it would be introduced. Adopted and go into fact immediately. Okay.
And again, that would the date, the consistency of all the references to the Board of Supervisors of Elections. The second item there, the election chair, that issue's been addressed. The date, the appointment of the supervisors was addressed. I recall, but I, we talked about whether or not there was any problem with the absentee ballots and how that that process worked. It was felt by the staff that that was all okay and it worked fine. And that these these other changes were changes that we could do to the new chapter as opposed to doing it to twenty twenty-three oh two. When the new chapter is being modified at the same time, it's going to create odd situation.
Yes, but my my understanding of what I came out of that that last meeting was that I should come up with a list of what needed to be modified, and because it needed to be changed by ordinance, I presented it in this format, because the it up into two separate ordinances was that it would not be ready to present at this town meeting from the issues that we had, that we still had to discuss what needed to be done, because the honestly, that document was horrible to work with. And so something had to be introduced tonight so that we didn't have to do an emergency ordinance to try to get it effective before the the elections, because see, there is even some stuff in there, such as you know, the the date of the election in in that twenty twenty-three oh two. In one spot, it says it's first Tuesday, and another spot, it says it's second Tuesday, so.
So I think, I, I would like all the commissioners who want to say something, to say something, so if we can. Commissioner Brooks, do you have any? You went, okay. Commissioner Colbert?
I'm just trying to understand what we're doing with this document tonight. Is this an introduction tonight? Is this supposed to be, was this introduced so that it didn't have to be an emergency ordinance? Are we still doing an emergency ordinance at the end of September? I'm just trying to understand what we're doing with this document.
Commissioner, I want, this wasn't up for introduction on the agenda. So at the beginning of the meeting, Commissioner Urquide wanted to add it to the agenda to, for us to consider introducing it. We agreed to do that. That doesn't mean we have to introduce it. I think, I personally think based on the opinion of the attorney, that it would be irresponsible of us to introduce it. That is my opinion. Um, do you have any?
Well, that would be, that, that, that would be my question, is if this is meant to be an introduction tonight, as my question of if the attorney had reviewed the document uh, in full, and my follow-up question to that was going to be, if this were to be introduced tonight, a normal ordinance process is introduction, discussed at the work session, and then passed possibly with amendments at the next town meeting. Does that timeline still allow for these changes to go into effect with that normal ordinance process?
So I have a question, but this is, so this is, this is presented last one, so you added new guidelines.
So that was breaking out what the comments were there, the corrections that need to be made from that other document from the work session to try to spell out exactly.
To make it clear.
Because it was.
It was all over the place.
Well, and just the printing.
Let's, let, Commissioner Law, if you have any unanswered questions on this ordinance.
No, no, I, I would second what, um, Colbert said, so. So I understand it's an emergency, it would have to be emergency ordinance, so.
So there needs to be, I guess, is there a motion to introduce this ordinance tonight?
I told you already.
Um, no, we have to vote to introduce it. It's on the agenda, but, so we, this is something, you know, that's a little new. With the legal advice and the professional advice, we're trying to get our meetings up to where they ought to be.
So I guess I'd like to ask the attorney, so is this, would it be bad to introduce this tonight? Or do we need to work and, I mean, I was hoping to avoid having to do this as an emergency ordinance, so people would.
We all were.
Well, so it doesn't say what you're amending, right? So usually you would say in your title, uh, this is the Board of Town Commissioners, the town of Marlboro, amending your, your town code, once it's adopted, chapter, what have you. Or right now, it would be the ordinance number twenty twenty-three oh two, right? And so then you would, in your now there for flaws, you would say amending twenty twenty-three oh two to that spot, and then you would show what the changes were.
Well, then this is going to be even longer.
What I would suggest, if you're willing to do that, is that you and I work together to look at the changes that are in the recodification elections chapter and see if you agree that those, um, address the immediate need. Then I think what, let's take the rest of it and do it as an amendment to the new town code, chapter eight, elections. And, and amend each of those sections in the code to read the way you want to in order to present that to the commissioners for their concerns.
On the ninth? I'm sorry, on the ninth.
Yeah, we'll talk afterwards, don't worry.
So is there a motion to enter ordinance twenty twenty-five? So, is there a second? Having no second motion dies, this will, I'm not going to take public comment, because this thing isn't actually going to go before the board, and we will have something different for the public to look at um, at the next meeting. So we don't need to discuss that in any minute of updates, but we're going to move on to administrative updates. We've already discussed. Oh, did I miss something? Yes. Yes. Right.
That's why.
Yeah, no, the town administrator determined not to add it to the agenda, so. Okay, so we're on to administrative updates. Um, Commissioner reports.
I'm sorry.
We, Commissioner reports first, and then we'll go to staff. Do you have anything to report?
Um, I just want to say, I listened to, you know, we've gone over this four or five times. And I listened to the beginning of the public comment, I listened to everyone. It pretty much is the same from last time, but you know, I, I, I'm a little baffled that, uh, people wants to keep moving stuff to referendum, scientific votes. You know, we had a, we had a survey, you may or may not like, we had a survey. Forty-four percent of people differ from yours. So is that to say that ignore the forty, forty-four percent people or the other constituents that differ from you, that's not a democracy, you have to include all people. That's what communists do, it just includes six, seven people on their thing. We, I've talked to constituents in my neighborhood and throughout the town. And a lot of their numbers differ from yours. So you, would you keep saying, oh, then, um, someone said, you know, this is being rammed down our throats? This has been on the table for a year and a half, or more. And then you want to say, oh, you know, let's, let's do a, a, a scientific vote, you know, let's move it for a referendum. That's insulting to the other people that gave their opinion. What do you say to those people? Your opinion doesn't matter? Because seven of us or eight of us said, said something different?
No, no, no.
That's my report.
Okay, we have to not cut each other off. We don't have to agree with it, but we have to let each other speak. Please, thank you.
Well, that's, that's, that's a democracy, all people.
All right. Commissioner Colbert, do you have?
Um, first, I just want to say, you know, I attended a couple of events this past month, since the last meeting. For the Town Community Day, I want to give a kudos to Commissioner Lotte, all the staff that worked so hard to organize and then kind of been together. Uh, and, and everyone who came out to be a part of that, it was a really good turnout. I think it was a great, uh, event that's continuing to grow, so that's been fantastic. Uh, also attended National Night Out, which was another great event over in the, the, the parking lot of the, uh, National Market. Uh, we welcomed another great event, another community event, so it was good to see a lot of people out there as well. Had a couple of other meetings, including the Economic Development Workgroup meeting, uh, some individual meetings with, um, some business owners and some individuals who are looking to potentially, uh, do some type of, whether it be workforce development or some type of other business development program within the town, so hoping to continue those conversations. And hopefully we can bring something, uh, that we can partner with, uh, moving forward. Um, that pretty much it, the only thing that I'll advocate for, you know, just in this statement is, you know, accurate information is going to be the biggest, uh, point that allows for people to make their own decisions. So just whatever information your people receive here, anything of that nature, just make sure you're vetting it and you're getting your, your information from correct sources. And that's just across the board.
Commissioner, wow.
Basically, um, I want to echo what you said, um, you know, uh, about getting the information, accurate information, and this board is trying to promote transparency. But I do want to say that we did not have a, a large number of people in that survey. So, like you said, people, you know, everybody has a choice. And, you know, the ones who filled out the surveys filled out the surveys. It was forty-four percent of whatever the count was. I was about, I don't know, it was, it was, it was a very low number of, of people who actually filled out the surveys, and yes, it was on the table for over a year. So at the end of the day, if everyone participates, when we ask and we, we, we want you to participate, that makes a difference and it helps out. So now, we have the decisions that we have, because people didn't participate in this, like they were supposed to, and that's all I want to say.
Commissioner.
Um, thank you all for, I think this is the largest attendance we've had in quite some time. Um, reports, I mentioned I attended the Westphalia Retail Meeting, um, Cert Meeting. Uh, FEMA had some training on volunteers and donations, and I was hoping that it would be in regards, you know, they would comment on recruitment of volunteers, but it turns out it, nothing, it was what do you do with volunteers while you're having a disaster going on? And so, not applicable, um, attended National Night Out, helped with Community Day. Um, and I was the one who circulated the Citizens Press. So some people were unhappy that it was not signed, and I apologize for that. There had been multiple people who had contributed to that, but because of some changes made at the last minute, I was the only one who saw it before it went to press. And I didn't want to put their names on it, and I stripped attribution off, and I just wanted to take credit as being the sole person for it. So I apologize for that. Um, we do plan on having the next issue, uh, hopefully in the next week or two, um, because it, September is, um, disaster prepared this month, and so we'll have some information on what to do to try and be prepared.
Oh, with your Citizen Press?
So, but, okay, so that.
Accurate information.
Accurate information is important. So I'm going to give my report. Um, I was able to attend National Night Out. Um, I thought I was going to get stuck at work, but I didn't, so I was really pleased. Um, it was a great event and met a lot of folks. Um. I also attended the Community Day, Commissioner Lotte did a great job. She and I had a, um, debrief meeting to, uh, lay out lessons learned for next year, which was really productive. Um, I have met with a couple of in-town business owners about different opportunities and ways to give some new businesses in town that support small businesses, so how we can engage them to support, uh, the businesses in town. So that was really productive. Um. Will say, because this is something we're saying, this, the last Citizens Press did not contain accurate information. I hope that this one will contain accurate information. Um, but as residents, if you have questions about anything you see, you can call Town Hall. Our staff can do research for you, they can answer your questions. Our staff are people who choose to work in municipal government. They choose to be at this meeting at eight forty-five PM because they care about serving you. They want to help you, they want you to have accurate information. So please go to the source for your accurate information. I will just say that, and I do want to clarify one more thing, which is about the survey results in relation to the charter amendments that were passed at the lab town meeting. Um, there were actually forty-four people that participated in that survey. Sixty-six percent of them, on average, supported most of the things that we passed. Um, and I think it's important that people come into this room and they tell us what they think. I said earlier, I'm a town planner. My degree is actually in community planning from the University of Maryland School of Architecture, Planning and Preservation. And one of the things we learned was not just how to form a statistical survey, but how to engage residents in multiple ways. We are not scientists up here. We're elected officials, we're doing the best we can to represent the people. Forty-four people gave us their opinion. They didn't just fill out a survey, they wrote, they wrote things down. Same way you come here and you tell us things, and it is disrespectful to those forty-four people for us to ignore their opinions for us to say that they didn't know what they were doing. The survey was not did, was not biased. People are knowledgeable, people have their own opinions, they develop on their own. And I, for one, respect all of our residents' opinions, and I hope that we can all show a little more respect for each other in future. That's my report. Please make it brief, but yes, go ahead.
Um, uh, goodness, I also, sorry, I also attended National Night Out, it was a nice outing. And I wanted to say that, um, I was able to collect some more book bags from the Marlboro, thanks to the Marlboro Moose. And they, um, they are here at Town Hall, so if any residents, um, still need book bags, they are, have to contact the town, and the town will hand them out.
Oh, that's very nice.
Staff, do you have any administrative updates for us?
All right, all the, all the different on here. Uh, I want to apologize that I didn't get this document to you guys on the time I realized I didn't send. Uh, thought it'd be better to just bring it up this meeting. Uh, but, um, just a little, uh, update on the splash pattern area. Uh, A and T completed a walkthrough of the maintenance agreement, uh, at Deep Eye and the Service Corps in the handrails. Uh, to certify, uh, to get them certified, completed documents will be mailed to the subcontractor A and P within the next couple of weeks. Other than that, Deep Eye has sort of out of the loop for now, it is currently under review, and, uh, so uh, after that, we can protest, Deep Eye, there will be a, uh, frequent company meeting and Deep Eye, so, made in town staff, um, before final approval of Deep Eye. And the only other thing we were waiting for is WSSC knowledge, acknowledgement of work and approval of your connection. But I will send the, uh, document that I have to get them all.
Great news.
So, we talked about this earlier, um, we'll be hiring a new police officer next week. So we'll be doing a swearing-in next week, which is at a non-meeting, because the next meeting that's available, I am out of town. But I will be getting people to get a swearing-in, I'm not here, so.
Well, plus, why wait an extra week to put a new officer on the street? Let's get them on the street as fast as possible.
So, it'll be probably next Tuesday, we'll put something out to make it official so everybody knows what time, city.
Well, I just wanted to really share, just a few statistics with everyone here in stats of just showing, you know, the work that staff does. Um, I know that we come here and every mistake is pointed out. Every misspelled word is pointed out, and I think that is really unfair to staff. Um, and I'll just give you an example. In one week alone, staff received eight hundred and thirty-three emails. That's not responding to, in, in addition to responding, that's received, eight hundred and thirty-three emails. They also respond to emails, they send emails. Um, and that's, that eight hundred and thirty-three does not include about a hundred or so from part-time staff, that they had two days a week. Now, this is just responding to emails, this is not, this is not, uh, in addition to what their daily tasks are. And so that everyone understands that those daily tasks seem to shift every fifteen minutes, different priorities. So, again, those are just emails. Let's go to phone calls. Phone calls alone, we received close to a hundred and fifty to two hundred phone calls a week. That's just receiving, right? And we're also calling people. In addition to all of that going on, I can say, within the past month, I have not received a single complaint from anyone. I think it is really unfair, and I think that it damages morale. When staff has to look at, uh, these meetings and see mistakes that are here, pointing out consistently. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
I will just say, I agree that the work session packets are provided. Work sessions are a great time to identify things, but grammatical mistakes, really just, it's an email. You don't need to embarrass staff.
And I also want to add, I asked for input.
You do.
I asked for input, but consistently, that doesn't occur until the Monday before or the Tuesday of, and then it's brought up at a meeting. And I don't, that's not fair to anyone. It's just not fair. So, you know, if you want to maintain staff and, and, and things like that, you've got to treat them professionally, because you will see turnover, people will leave, no one wants to be embarrassed or berated, no one wants that. And that's, you know, that's, and that's me as a town administrator. And that's, you know, that's, and that's me as a town administrator, basically defending my staff because that's what needs to happen.
Thank you. So I am going to move on to public comment. Um, I do agree with the town administrator, uh, but we're going to take general public comment at this time. If you have public comment, please come up, stay in and the street you live on, try to keep your comment three minutes. We have a closed session after this, so.
Okay, let me go to the answer. I'm famous for, 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 for. And, uh, anyway. Um. What do I, I'm staying there. I'm disappointed and I think. This, this chart going on this chart, but I believe that it's not much I can do or anybody can do to change what the plans are. I do believe that the chart is being changed. I do believe that we have updated it, but I would like to, and I know it's hard to get a public comment. I, I do that for them. And that's good for the more people, but how many people we have in town who are opposed, but four hundred? So I'm thinking that we need to go out and do more as participants as volunteers. The residents, long-term residents. My house is a lot of challenges. It's a lot going on there and I think you're working toward making it. I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I can't allow you to address staff's sets.
That I think is just disgusting that we can't talk to our people who represent us. I also think it's horrible that I'm tall, that it's not a phone number. And I get a long message that says, call three one one. Don't call me. Um, call three one one. They have a feeling that you call this place, please. I did not get anybody after that long message. I think I should hear a voice at the end of the call. I also feel that the, the terming hold is going to be open.
You can ask, I will answer any questions during public comment at the end of the public comment.
And I tend to have to turn my whole day. I never do, but nobody answers it. I don't know anybody's, um, or the extension. I think, and I could be wrong. Is there anything in order? That gives, give commissioners extension and staff extensions. Because it's very irritating to people. They can get everybody very irritated to ring that doorbell and nobody answers it. And it's the day. I understand that about, with two of them. So and I also would say that I think that I would give more about what each one of you are doing. Everything that you said about your reports itself, I hope you say that. That is so genuine. You know, what was Steven, I want to do, like, any, okay. That's it. Where's the meeting to say you can make our home a better? I don't hear any, anybody saying, how would you make our home a better? And I would like, I would like to go to where it was, but I know we can't, we need, we need to go forward. But that means go forward in a different way. But I don't feel that the residents uh, are getting, uh, to help and that. What kind of thing? Uh, and say, do you really care about what happens today? Every time I talk about the things that, and, and I, it's, I don't know, I'm being angry, but I just say that I think that you should listen and dialogue me so that we can manipulate them and that you can back saying, and then you can cooperate and work in more the longer as the time. I think I will do great that, but there's something missed. What is it? But there's something missing that we are so threatened, but we don't have tanks. We're, we don't have it. That a small community. I can say more because like I said, I'm not having four, I'm able to participate in things like once before. Uh, because of, I hope by the second, but.
Thank you. Um, any other public, general public comment?
Excuse me, uh, the Duke of New York, bring Brian Brown. One of those two things. Everybody's at inaccurate information. An opposing view is not inaccurate. It's just that it's open view. It's someone else's viewpoint. A lot of times you talk to people and you give them your perspective. Do you give them our perspectives? Do you give them, do you even ask? I have been here the whole time you've been on board. Now, why don't you say anything to me? About why I feel the way I feel. And it's easy to look away the other way and say, well, that's the, she said, that's what she said, so. But you, there's no discussion. And that's what this town needs is the discussion. Why do you think people are going door to door now for that discussion? That's number one. Number two. On July twenty-second, now meeting. Uh. And I apologize that this is, uh, not in your purview, but Mayor Frankel stated that she worked for a previous, uh, mayor and she don't work for fun than that is me. Uh, that she was not given information timely. She was only allowed to form one staff. Thank you so much. And that bothers me a lot. They, when people came on board, they were giving as much information as we could give them. They were instructed, talk to whoever you want to talk to. If you have a question, we can confer. We had three people on the board. Any two as a quorum, we could not talk. So for her to say, I told her she could only talk to me, no way. She was allowed to go to announce and testify. I mean, these are things that were so egregiously wrong and actually enough not by. And I am very offended by it. Happens again, we're going to be in court.
Any other public comment?
First of all, it was even at the town hall and not very long, uh, on street. Uh, and not, uh, not this. Okay. I didn't understand. My husband's. I, I have a hard time with the, the whereas in the ordinance. Because it feels like, uh, we're perpetuating immunity issues. And that is the third whereas statement, um, about the, um, committee. When two people on the committee state that these were not their recommendations, then that's. And it's blatant. Take it away. I don't want mis. In what is essentially our constitution and I don't know why. And then he said one thing that is verifiably, I spoke with all of them. Verifiably not true, then who am I to say it's true? And then why isn't there be a question of trust? I, I have a, I have a vision of a small government where, where it, it feels like a democracy because we, we interact, wage, care, issues, you can pay. Maybe we give them a front rather than, you know, after everything's written for three years. You have to take it already. And say, you feel like you're a bad person because you're bringing things. But when we do this, have a forum like they must have time to. I mean, direct democracy is, is rarity in this country, in democracy in this community. And, and I, I just sincerely, one, we sold and, and hurt. Would like us to be a true democracy. I'm sorry for the hurt feelings that are going. But from my, I, I, I'm hoping to distribute the paper. We thought it was pretty cool. I thought it was. And I would do it again. I was proud, you know, in writing, that's my thing. I could do that. So I choose that it was bad. You know, it's good. We need dissent. We need diversity of opinion, just like we need diversity of people. You know, and, and, and it shouldn't be just one, you know, like, and that's what it feels like. So this is a small government that I was hoping for and I, that's what I would like them to talk about three years ago. What can we do this to make it feel like, I mean, that was a part of it. Now, I've been going through a petition about referendum because it wasn't, it wasn't, nobody responded. What else can we do? I may not get, I may not get responsible, but you know, they're in good luck. But and, and I hate you that you guys have to campaign. I hate going there. But I admit some really important people. And, and they create important people to do. They, they, they must give me. And yeah, they don't feel like they'd be heard and, and they spike that up. And so, I don't know. Well, different comments, like, sometimes I go, he said, listen, don't everything is dark. Okay. I know you've invested. It's awful to go backwards. It's awful, but you know, I just, I just feel like so many of us feel left out. And it's hard to do. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so I'm closing the public comment period and answer the question. So have anything else to say? Say it now. Okay, um, though I want to first address the idea that, uh, residents can't talk to people who represent them. That is just not true. This forum, a public meeting is not like the place for conversation. We've been working. It's already nine o'clock. We have a closed session. We have to go into. It's not really the place for conversation, but we create a lot of opportunities for conversation. Unfortunately, tonight after the meeting, there's not the opportunity, but generally we stick around after the meeting. We're happy to converse with you. We're happy to hear what you want to say. Um, so I think some of that question I'm gonna kind of tie to and together goes into Mary's question about why we can't have a direct democracy. And I think we talked about this already. Um, you know, a town hall form of government is everyone who comes into the room gets a vote. Anyone who doesn't come into the room doesn't get a vote. I, I think we've extensively shared that whether we believe that's true democracy or not, and, and we can have different opinions on that. And we can also, instead of saying, you know, yelling and shouting and saying things, we can have a different opinion. We can still be neighbors. We can still be friends. And I would like that, that to come back because I agree with the point that Evelyn made, that it doesn't feel like we can have a dialogue. We're losing our town spirit. And I think a lot of that is, there is some mean spiritedness around the motion moving forward that we're doing. And so the community is struggling with perf- the, with a move to professional. Struggling with the separation between the business so that we can keep us moving forward and get downtown going. Um, versus here's an open forum for us to talk and have a conversation. I don't enjoy the situation I'm in where my neighbors hold everything against me. Send me emails with all capitals and where someone who was once my friend, yes, gave me lots of information when I first came on this board, but then I have several emails saying, don't talk to this person. You can't speak to this person. We're not going to answer that question. We're not going to deal with that. So I think this, this really goes both ways. There's political things. I get that. That's okay. But I think that it is not, it, I work very hard to serve all of you, no matter what happens to Wade, to be friendly to you, no matter what happens. I can't control, my husband says all the time, I cannot control how other people act. I can only control how I act. And I strive to keep myself and I will give other commissioners a chance to share their perspective on that. I just want to answer the question about trouble getting through on the phone. We've been over this like a couple of times, but I don't think you were at any of those meetings. A hundred and how many phone calls a week? A hundred and fifty phone calls a week? That is down from like three hundred a week. So when, when you could pick up our phone and you could sit on the line and eventually you would get a person. Pretty much all our administrative assistants did was answer calls and say, but you're not in the town. No, you're not in the town. Explain to people over and over again if they're not in the town. Residents of the town hit zero. You don't actually have to have an extension, just like old days. I remember when I had this dial phone, right? You could dial zero and you'd get the operator. Same deal here. Um, I don't know. I, I think we took out the, the doorbell that wasn't working. So there's only a working doorbell. I have never been in this building and not had multiple staff members jump up when that doorbell gets heard. It's possible you're coming at lunch, but, or when staff is all in a meeting together. I don't, I don't know, but I've never noticed the door not getting answered, but I think our town administrator will be looking into that. Um, let's see, uh. So inaccurate information, opposing viewpoints are not inaccurate information. I will say that and Commissioner Colbert pointed out some of the inaccurate information last time. So I don't know that we need to repeat that. You can watch that last video about inaccurate versus opposing viewpoints. No problem with opposing viewpoints. Um. Let's see. The, I think the whereas clause, I think there's confusion about the whereas clause in the last one because that was corrected. Um, I think there's also confusion about the charter review committee. Charter review committee had four, it was supposed to have five people on it, had four people on it. Really only like one or two people came. Most of the notes that came out of the charter review committee were the notes from one person. Um, and different people have different views, but the charter review committee, two of the people from the charter review committee then became commissioners and were responsible for the decisions made on this charter review. Um, and I don't think, you know, sometimes as residents, we're busy, right? Like my kid, I used to, my kids would be playing baseball. I wouldn't come to town meetings the whole time baseball season was on and I would miss all that stuff. And it's sunk. If something passed and I didn't get to participate in it, but I didn't think that the board needed to go back and redo it because I didn't get a chance to participate. So I think I'm glad that everyone's here because you can participate. And if you are really thinking back, you'll notice that we actually do make changes based on your input. All of us have consistently made changes based on your input. Um, so what I, I really, I keep saying the same thing over again. Can we please try to remember we're neighbors and try to treat each other like we're neighbors? And if anyone else wants to say anything on that, I think I've answered all the actual questions.
Um, the only, the only thing I'll say, um, because I started the conversation about, um, inaccurate information is to reiterate. I never said anything about opposing viewpoints. I very clearly understand the difference between opposing viewpoints and accurate versus inaccurate information. I welcome dissenting conversations. I think dissent is a healthy part of a deliberative process. And I feel like I have been open and willing to have conversations with anyone. We may not come to an agreement out of that conversation, but I feel like I've done uh, what I could to show that I'm willing to listen and have adjusted some of my commentary or actions based on the conversations I have had that may have been dissenting to what I originally believed. So there's no ambiguity. There's no confusion on my part between what is an opposing viewpoint and what is dissenting opinion. My statement was, if you're, if there is a dissenting opinion, we have to be operating from the same set of facts. Things happen. Things are on record and we all can look at those records and understand what actually happened. We may have a different interpretation of why things happen and that's fine. We can have that discussion. But when there are statements made that are factually inaccurate, that's where we can't have a common basis of understanding to discuss why we may have disagreements and that was the basis of my, of my statement.
Does anyone else? I, I want to give everyone else a chance to, okay. All right. Um. So we are on to preliminary approval of the next meeting agenda. Um, I'm not sure if we're going to have annexation ready. I think we have town committees, R F Ps and the coup plan. Was it, was there one more thing? Oh, the elections. Was there one more thing? Oh, the elections, changes to the codification. Okay, I feel like there's one, one more thing that is on the spreadsheet, but I cannot remember it right now. Though possible addition based on previous discussions. And then are there any commissioner changes to the agenda? Okay, so we'll move forward with that. I don't know that we're actually adjourning or there's, there's closed session notice on the door, but I don't actually have the thing I need to submit to me.
It's an administration.
Oh, it's not a closed session. It's an administrative.
The local government and trans trust, they're going to explain to you who they are, what they do, what they offer. It has a little training session. So it's administrative.
Okay, so I don't have to close it. So is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Did you say aye? That was motion made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Brooks, unanimous of all commissioners. Guys, got that?